Margaret and call us all as to be Steve's this evening.
Yeah, so that's it? I don't have his number, I don't know.
I don't have either.
Uh, hey, do you have?
What's my name?
Your name, do you really want your name? Do I have to call you by your name? Bernice, no. Janelle, do you have that list of everybody, the, the boards and addresses? Maybe we can call Galen?
I don't with me, but um, Galen's on my husband's baseball team, so I'll just get.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Baseball team?
Little league.
Oh.
T-ball.
I'm sorry, I didn't think there was a adult, adult league in Holly, which is a super depressing thing. Our parks does not have any coeds up only.
Hey, can you text me Galen's number? Yeah. Okay, you gotta do it right now, though. Bye-bye.
Write me out. We could probably start at the public hearing, we just can't act on it, right?
Right.
I didn't realize Cullis was up. What's he doing in Traverse City? What's going on up there?
MTA conference.
Ah, MTA?
Michigan.
Oh, I was saying, I was like, the buses?
Uh-huh, what are they doing here?
Just that light bulbs out.
Hey, Galen, it's Janelle. How are you? Good. You know, we have a meeting tonight? Oh, okay. Right. Okay, we will wait then. Okay, alright, bye. He's three minutes out.
I don't know, I can't wait.
Be dead excited.
We'll go ahead and start without him being here.
Okay.
Read him in when he gets here. No sense in waiting. Good evening, I would like to uh, call the Village of Holly's Planning Commission meeting for April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen in order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, if we could have roll call?
Okanski?
Here.
Cleven is excused, Steele is excused, Putz?
Here.
Hayhall is, is excused, Goldsmith?
Here.
Cullis is excused, Kirkshank?
Here.
And Christian is on his way.
He will be here in a few minutes.
We do have to make the motion to officially excuse them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we excuse uh, Margaret Hayhall, George Cullis, Sandra Cleven, Cal Steele, and what's my name, Sandra?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Excuse is accepted. Alright, uh, the approval of the agenda, did anybody see any typos or anything on there that uh, would need to be corrected before we approve it?
Nope, make the motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Approval of the agenda. Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes for March twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Uh, I don't see any issues, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Approval of the minutes for March twenty-eighth approved. Alright, statement of purpose, we have a volunteer to read that for us, please.
I can do it. The mission of the Holly Village Government is to enhance our community's quality of life, our organization strives for quality services, responsive action to citizen requests, and a cost-effective government. We promote citizen participation, proactive decision-making, and environmental quality. Most importantly, we shall always serve the citizens of Holly. The Village of Holly will be a prestigious historical village that is a green residential oasis from the city and the center of commerce and activity for the region.
Thank you. And if we could note that Galen is uh, now here.
Barely.
Thank you. Alright, we need a motion to open up public hearing.
Make the motion that we open up public hearing for case two thousand seventeen dash zero one for the consideration of amending section one five seven dot zero seven six, uh, the central business district to allow sidewalk cafes to serve alcohol.
Alright. Ready?
This is where I should make the amendment to that, propose?
Uh, that would be in discussion.
Yeah, we still have to second the.
Alright, we need to second the opening of the.
Support.
Alright, we have a motion of support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now open. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to uh, step forward to the mic, read your, or say your name and your address, and anything you'd like to comment on regarding the uh, case before us. Okay, don't see anybody stepping forward.
Uh, make a motion to exit public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to exit, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Public hearing is now closed. Now we go on to public comments. Anything that you would like to speak about, um, anything at all? Anybody like to step forward again, state your name and address, and we're here to listen to you. Seeing no one move forward, let's go on to old business, which there is none. Now the new business is uh, the consideration of recommending a proposal to amend the Village, or to the Village of Council for the amendment uh, on that case two zero one seven dash zero zero one. Uh, are there any comments for any of the staff here that would like to speak or have any comments in that area? Alrighty.
I'm just moving to the podium, so. So, um, so as everyone sees in their packets, um, and outlined in the memo.
Could you state your name, please?
Uh, Caitlin McGoldrick with Row Professional Services Company.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Um, so, um, as you can see in our memo that we provided for this April meeting, um, we highlighted and underlined red, so the text amendment, um, is one seven, or one fifty-seven, zero seventy-six, um, subsection C four, I four, um, and it currently reads, "The sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and spirits shall not be permitted in any sidewalk cafe permitted under this policy." What we are changing is we are adding comma unless permission is granted by the Village Council.
Okay.
So that's, um, and this amendment, as everyone is, may be aware, is that it was initiated by the administration, uh, looking to add some flexibility, um, for a pending applicant, um, looking to add some type of sales in the sidewalk area. Currently, we already permit sidewalk sales to take place, so.
Right, and if I'm not, if I also understand, then whoever would wish to sell spirits or alcohol would also have to hold a valid license?
That's correct.
To do so.
Yeah, I think it mentions the code in here somewhere, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission Code, yeah.
The, the LCC up and the, also the International Fighter Code, the Michigan Building Code, and then any Village ordinances, they would all have to follow those as well.
And the Village would also then verify that the applicant obtained that would qualify.
Absolutely.
You had mentioned that you had some comments on there.
Yeah, I uh, my comment is, uh, the alcohol beverages should be served in a enclosed fenced area.
And that is part of the Michigan Liquor Control, they do require that.
Right, and then you stated about, they had to hold a liquor control.
They have to have a valid license as well, yep, license and insured.
My only question, I guess, is just the wording of it, just, it doesn't say for the individual how to get permission, like permit or see Village Office.
It's under a different title.
Okay.
Under the application process.
Okay.
But it is a special permit, uh, it's similar to what Andy's does.
Okay.
But it would be just on the sidewalk instead of in the right of way or in the parking spaces.
Okay.
And as you're aware, Andy's has been doing it for about two, three years now.
Yeah, no issues.
And that's an annual permit as well, so if there was an issue, it would be, have to come in front of the Village Council again for the next year to do another permission granted, so.
Would something like, let's entertain the idea of the vault, would they have to get permission for each individual wedding, or would one permit cover them for the, the year?
No, I believe they're gonna have to get individuals, individual permits.
Okay, 'cause like, just thinking.
It could change.
Council action, they may have, you know, obviously if they have two weekends, there's only two meetings a month, they may, we may be doing an approval every single, okay.
Uh, that's something we can, we'll discuss in-house, but as far as I know, it'd be as it, as it goes, just a special event, just like any other special event.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, but you said the permit would last for a year, that would be on a fixed establishment, is what you're saying?
Correct, so for the sidewalk sales, which is outlined in um, that section four there, um, where it talks about that, um, it's an annual permit there for any commercial establishment. So once you get into the special event, that's slightly different, so Jeremy indicated that as so.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't have any issues, um, I would make the.
So, Mr. Kirkshank, I am, just kidding, pointed out here, does say in the uh, Planning Commission Action Request Form that we gave to you guys, uh, the la, second to last paragraph, about halfway through, it says, "Local approval by the Village Council would occur, occur annually, and any establishment would also be subject to all the rules and regulations of the Michigan Liquor Control." So it looks like that permit would be an annual permit for a one-time, one-time deal.
Okay.
If I'm interpreting it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to eliminate repetitiveness at the office, that's all.
Right.
We know they're gonna be holding weddings, it's most weekends through the summer, it seems like it'd just be a lot of work for both parties to do at each wedding.
So just as Andy's place, um, puts in for their permit, um, to have their outdoor dining and deck, um, it would be similar than that, um, any other establishment that wants to do that would, um, submit their, their information, and if it was approved by Village Council, then it would be for that calendar year.
Perfect.
But in the, like with the vault and/or uh, anyone else, if it's specially event, sometimes those special events would fall underneath a different liquor license, so would that not then require a different application each and every time?
Well, I, I think that the Michigan Liquor Control states that, um, they can serve, they have the license to serve it outside as long as they conform to those regulations of serving outside. Um, I know one of them, like Northern Oak had last year was, had, the perimeter had to be fenced, so that once you're out there, you can only get out with an emergency egress for fire or other emergency, other than that, you have to be contained to that area. So people can't just come and go from that area, you have to go back into the establishment and go out through the front doors.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about it, all of them are already fenced, you know, Andy's is fenced, the deck is, North Oak is fenced out there, then we have Jay's, or not Jay's, whatever it's called, now the Holly Inn, that's fenced in, so.
And Jay's does too, yep, or yeah.
And uh, Backroads, the old Martinis is fenced in the back there, so I mean, it's.
It serves their best interest.
Right.
Have it fenced as well, I mean.
And the one that guys like you in, right? Right.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm just kidding.
How would the beer tents go at the events we have, citywide events?
The beer tents are already fenced in.
Yeah, they have to be fenced in as well.
Yeah, they have that, uh, you know, faux orange.
Dickens Festival, the snow fence wraps around it.
Yeah, that stuff's already taken care of. Um, I would make the motion that we send to uh, Village Council for approval the text amendment of ordinance one five seven dot zero seven six, section C, uh, four, I four, uh, amending, uh, the sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and all spirits shall not be permitted in any sidewalk cafe permitted under this policy unless permission is granted by Village Council.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support, I'll, or let's have a roll call, please?
Okanski?
Yes?
Christian?
Yes.
Putz?
Yes.
Goldsmith?
Yes.
Kirkshank?
Yes.
Alright, unanimous, uh, to move forward, uh, putting that to council. Alrighty.
Thanks Caitlin.
Moving on to reports, ZBA.
We have a meeting Monday, uh, next Monday, actually.
Okay. DDA.
Um, there is a lot going on, but uh, highlights are that everything is done and complete, they're just waiting on the contractor to schedule the demolition of the car wash. So that's pretty exciting, um, and they talked about parking and trying to do some more management so that people aren't parking downtown and they're not carpooling from downtown and taking up valuable spaces. And then Goodwood, the Village has made an offer on the property, um, they're interested in relocating the fire department there because it is, uh, makes more sense, so it's not trapped where it's at now. And, um, also considering moving the police department in that building too for the same reason. And ladies' night's in full swing and I'm already wore out, but we're rocking it, so it's gonna be great.
Alright, thank you. Uh, council, David?
Um, so last night we discussed some more of the parking, uh, issues, and we tabled it, uh, for the time being, just to kind of reset expectations and what, uh, we're thinking about doing. It was brought forth to, to have some action last night, and we decided against taking any action right now to kind of see, you know, what our options are and, and go from there. Um, other than that, uh, the, uh, other one is the snow ordinance was discussed last night, we tabled that till next meeting because the, there was some requests from Director Clausen to keep the downtown at its current ordinance of no parking from November to April, um, and from three to seven AM there, so that allows them some capacity to clean out the, the downtown. But the crux of the snow ordinance amendment will now go to a snow emergency village-wide, so we will no longer be prohibited from parking overnight, um, from three to seven throughout the village. Um, and then we would just go to a snow emergency where if the Pontiac or Flint, um, National Weather Service predicts two inches or greater, we would go into a snow emergency where then you would pull your cars off regardless of the time of day, and then that would be in effect until twenty-four hours after the snow has stopped. Um, this is a lot more, um, uh, feasible option in the village, and we've heard tons of complaints, people pulling on their lawns all winter, just, and then we have, you know, no expectation of snow for weeks on end, so we're only talking about, you know, eight to fourteen instances of winter, uh, so, um, barring that, it'll be on the next meeting, uh, to approve, and I believe it'll go through, so.
Okay. Two inches seems like a little low in that area.
Yeah, that's usually when Brian kicks in and calls the guys in to throw some salt and that kind of thing, so that's usually the trigger for them. And we, we actually on the Charter and Ordinance Committee, which comprises myself, Suzanne Hyple, and Chris Rankin, we looked at many other communities that have that, and two inches is their magic number as well, so. Uh, this would be an instance where the Village will not kick out communications if they were under a snow emergency. They would give a common courtesy, I would expect, for the first few times, um, but most cities do not, so it's up to the residents to be informed, so either, you know, listen to the radio, watch the news, pick up a paper, go to the library.
Look outside.
There's, yeah, look outside.
Look outside.
There's one of those instances, you know, government doesn't always have to push information out to the residents, there's a, you know, a reasonable expectation that you're relatively informed.
Don't park on the street when it's clearly gonna be blocked.
And so, that kind of thing, but that will save money, I believe, in the long run with the Village because they schedule guys right now for that three to seven timeframe, and then they have to work their scheduled shifts, so we're talking overtime money. Uh, now they can come in, you know, during normal shift hours and do some snowplowing with the expectation that their streets will be cleared, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just thinking, there was a lot of people that work, you know, an hour away, you know, they're not gonna come home to get their car off this, off the road.
No, yeah, and that's the reasonable expectation part, you know, like, yeah, well, everybody knows, we're expecting a monster storm in three days, that's, you know, usually you talk of the town or talk at work and that kind of stuff, so I, I really have a hard idea, thinking that people will be completely oblivious to the weather in winter.
I'm curious what the enforcement side, like what the, your opinion is on, on that.
I'll treat you just like I treat anything else, I'll give you a warning.
Alright, just as far as the, in philosophy, does it make sense for yours, it seem like it's gonna be a, a.
The enforcement side sometimes can be a little bit on the foggy side.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Yeah.
Sometimes people just don't understand.
I mean, we've had this current ordinance for decades, at least, I would think, you know, as long as I've been here, and that people still park overnight from November to, you know, so it's like, regardless of that, people are not gonna comply regardless, so there is those, you know, instances, so.
Alright, and I don't think we still don't have anybody on Parks, you know, to my knowledge, they haven't done anything anyhow.
Um, I can speak to one thing that we're working on too, is Chris Rankin and I, who's the Chair of the Parks Committee and on council, uh, we went out to the, uh, meeting for the Chi, Friends of the Chihuahua River at Red Fox, and we're pitching the idea, they have a annual festival in July, uh, called River Fest. And they encourage everybody from Holly all the way through Linden, Linden and Argentine, uh, to, you know, get involved with that and come out. Uh, they've had it in Fenton one year, uh, excuse me, two years, uh, they've had it for their second year in Linden, and we're pitching it to bring it to Holly at Waterworks Park for the two thousand nineteen year. Um, it's an all-day festival where they have music playing, there's tons of vendors, uh, there's tons, it's all water-related, so kids, you know, they have like the, I forget what they call them, but it's the cardboard, they're building the cardboard boats, and they're paddling out as fast as they can, as fast before they sink into the water, you know, just a day of fun to celebrate the river and, and that kind of thing, so as they're getting the, um, certification to make Chihuahua a national headwaters trail, which will bring ideas for grants and stuff like that, we wanna kind of tie that and boost a little bit of Waterworks Park too, 'cause it's severely underutilized, so that's what we're working on, so hopefully, uh, by River Fest this year in July, they'll be announcing Holly, hopefully. As the next one.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner and staff comments, alright?
I'm tired. That's good, that's about it.
I noticed that the car dealer on Elm and, uh, Second Street has really cleaned up their parking, it's not all jumbled up like it used to be, so. Apparently somebody in the staff has, uh, taken heat of it.
Running battle.
Yeah, it looks like he has less inventory sitting there. Anything else? David?
Uh, nothing for me.
My usual, sorry I'm late. We're very busy right now, which is a good thing and a bad thing.
Glad you made it, 'cause otherwise we wouldn't have had a corn, so thank you.
Right, right, I wondered why I got a call, I mean, no one's ever been that concerned about whether I've showed up before.
Uh, actually, for, I guess, for the first time, I guess I don't have anything either, actually. Anybody down there? No?
If you wanna go personal, Caitlin's getting married this weekend.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
So my name will be changing, so next meeting I'll have a different name. This will be, uh, Heben.
How's it shorter?
B-B-E-N, yep, so I can actually fill my whole name in everywhere.
Nice.
I know the struggle.
Yeah, nice.
Uh, today we gave out another safe business award to Australian Salon, so I don't know if you guys are on Facebook following downtown Holly, I believe it is, um, but, uh, they were very excited and ecstatic to, uh, see us, uh, out there and give them that award, so that was fun, um, other than that.
I think one of the unintended things for that is it gets a lot of shares on Facebook, which is free promotion for them, so I think that's, that's pretty cool.
We tried to help the business out there.
Yeah, no, good, that's a great program, kudos to you guys for thought of it.
Tag as many as possible, which I am, um.
And no Village dollars.
Yeah, no, that's awesome.
Right. Um, and update, if you, uh, have seen the progress lately, there is a new public art installation on the side of the RHL group, um, right across from the Holly Hotel that faces Broad Street. Their new mural that's being worked on, um, by Kevin Berdick of Scraps Designs is just phenomenal. It's, um, probably two-thirds, three-quarters down, and so if you drive by Broad Street and pass by, um, the RHL group, right before you get to Battle Alley, which is right on the corner, you'll see it's the whole side of the building there, um, so it's a, it's a train, and an old car, and a tree, and like a little, uh, you know, um, shed, so it's just, uh.
It's somewhat animated.
It, it does look like that, yeah.
A little bit, it's really cool.
No, they're.
When it comes to, to public art is, um, it's an important thing, it's part of that, um, sense of place and, and place-making, and for, um, Mr. Redman to, he's foot in the bill for the side of that. Um, the last one was up for fifteen years, and, uh, this is the replacement for it, and it's, um, it's incredible, so, uh, make sure you, uh, pass by and, and see the progress. Um, I talked to Kevin today and said, you know, tell me how you do this, kind of, he said, you wanna see? And his trunk open, there's probably thirty aerosol cans. It's a mural, that's the, the entire side of the building, two stories, and his two cans, just, just crazy, so.
Those graffiti kids, now they turn into grown adults and doing their own.
And now they call him urban artist.
Yeah.
That's the new, uh, of the new term, and, um, we can get you back on the, uh, PDA, um, we have some exciting news that the, um, five oh one C three designation, uh, the non-profit that we have five for called Main Street Holly is approved by the IRS, and so we are ready to start survey donations.
Are they flooding in?
We are very excited about, are you anybody, uh, when you're talking about grant opportunities?
Right, oh yeah.
It's a great place to, uh, kind of, look for.
Perfect.
And the ongoing reports.
Speaking of the murals, though, when I was on Historic District, there was discussion of the other building on, you know, where one oh one is, where the Holly Hotel mural is, and there's something else there, and it's escaping here now, but they were supposed to come up and take, you know, redo that or refresh that, is there?
I can give an update on that.
Okay.
So, um, Kevin Berdick, uh, the one who's doing that huge mural, has also been commissioned to do the replacement, um, mural on the side of, of Bob Hoffman's building.
Okay.
So there's two things, one, it says, "A good hardware welcomes you," and there's information about the Holly Hotel, which technically is like a off-site signage, so it can only be, um, uh, replaced in the, the same kind of, of spirit or intents and purposes of what it's supposed to look like. The other just says municipal parking, but, um, Kevin, and he's been in, in talks with, uh, George and Chrissy at the Holly Hotel, and he said, "If all goes well weather-wise, that the replacement mural, um, for that, uh, you know, good hardware should be finished by the end of next week."
Wow.
Wow.
Two new big, uh, kind of, um, exciting updates to, um, to the art in our town.
That'd be, that'd be very visible there.
Yes.
Anything in store for the, uh, wall there on the Battle Alley there, and the frame shop wall?
I'm, I'm sorry, on the wall?
It, on the frame shop wall there, that building there?
Yeah. Oh, where it's, um, so it says, uh, um, historic, uh, the Dickens Festival, and, um, I don't believe that there's any intentions to put any murals on that. There's the, um, the marker of, um, uh, who has, uh, kind of provided, I, I can't remember the exact information, that bronze plaque that's up on the wall there, and I think that that's, um, intended to remain. So not any, any art there, but, um, I do know that there's interest from the, uh, gentleman who owned the downtown Holly party shop, right across from Mr. Hoffman's building, that there's a nice, big, pretty wall right there.
That's what I was gonna ask you about, was what we discussed at Chamber, having a.
Which, um, would be the perfect place for it, it's just, uh,
Yeah.
Coming up with the funds for it, so I, I think that'd be a great place for it.
Okay. Do you know anything? Okay. If there's not, was, I guess we had public comment again, for a matter of thing. Name and address, please?
Angela Lemon, one one six College Street, I can give you an update on the parks.
I think she's on Parks now. That's right. That's right.
Uh, the twenty-eighth, which is this Saturday, uh, we'll be meeting at Gansha Park, um, at noon for the walk-through of the parks. I don't know how many parks we're gonna get to, but we're gonna start at Gansha. Um, the tennis courts are definitely going in, in Cyclone Park, but it-
You mean the volleyball courts?
Uh, yeah. The volleyball courts, well, what I was thinking of is the tennis courts is where they were originally gonna put the volleyball courts, but it's gonna be too expensive for them, so they're moving down to the opposite end where the flagpole is. They're thinking three to four, uh, volleyball courts, um, and Music in the Parks is going to be Saturday, June the ninth, from five to seven. Um, I can't remember the name of the group, uh, but I believe it's-
It's a blues band, isn't it?
Yeah, blues. Um, and then Cleanup Day for Holly Parks is June second at ten o'clock, will be starting again at, uh, Gansha Park. And probably spend a lot of time there, I don't know which other park, probably Lakeside, but for sure Gansha, working on the gazebo especially.
The Blue Cat Band.
Blue Cat, yeah.
And Ms. Lemon, just so you know, we ordered, uh, "No Dogs in the Parks" signs last week, so all the parks will have "No Dogs in the Parks" signage.
Well, no dogs at all, or no dogs if they're off a leash?
No dogs at all.
No dogs at all?
And that's what the ordinance says, yep, so.
Huh.
That's a little disappointing.
Well, it just takes a few, just takes a few, so.
Yeah, a lot of problems with them letting them run loose, well, I don't know about all the parks, but I know at, uh, Cyclone it's been a problem, and over at the Cemetery and Lakeside, it's been a problem.
So they will be getting signage?
Alright, thank you.
Soon as they come in.
Alright. Anyone else have any comments? Alright. Motion to adjourn by anybody?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned, thank you everybody for coming.
I came twice. I was your last Wednesday, too. Much as I don't mind coming to these meetings, coming to an extra one is just annoying.